Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. The Board has been in executive session since about 5:45 PM to discuss negotiations, matters of employment history, particular persons, potential litigation, matters made confidential by federal and state privacy laws, that's FERPA and Education Law 2D, and to receive advice from council subject to Board approval. So can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting? Anyone? Ryan. Okay, Ryan, and Warren, you'll second. All in favor? I'd love to stand and have our Bell students who are here tonight lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. They could just say it right there. Right from there is fine. That's great. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite. Thank you so much. And we made a shift this week, and we moved our meeting up one day to a Tuesday night, which is unusual for us. We're always here on Wednesdays. The weather forecast was not looking good for a Wednesday night meeting, and it's still sort of iffy, so we will keep you posted. And rather than take a chance on a cancellation, we thought we would be proactive and make a switch, so I'm glad we were able to work that out, and thank you all for being here or tuning in. We were originally scheduled to have our winter leadership retreat prior to this Wednesday meeting, and that centers around the book One Trusted Adult by Brooklyn Rainey, but based on the author's availability and our weather change, we will now be having that retreat prior to our February 8th meeting. I want to thank everyone for their feedback regarding the 2023-2024 school calendar. Based on that feedback, we've made some calendar adjustments. I know Christine will highlight those in the superintendent's report, and we do have a resolution on tonight's agenda to adopt this new version of the calendar. We also have a resolution under the president's report this evening to adopt a revised Board of Education calendar for this year, and I just wanted to mention that's to reflect BOSI's election and vote that's now scheduled for April 25th. That was always on our calendar as a TBD. It always takes place in April, but now we have a definite date, and that's why we have revised the Board of Ed calendar, and we plan to adopt that tonight. Also on tonight's agenda, you will notice that there will be a resolution to support a temporary and a permanent leadership change that Christine notified the community about last week. Jeff Curtis, who is here with us this evening, will be taking a brief medical leave in February from his role as principal at Bell to have hip surgery. I know we all wish him a full and speedy recovery. Nothing really slows Jeff down, as you all know by now, but his hip needs to be addressed, and we are very thankful that Carol Bartlick, our current Director of Literacy and former principal at Grafflin, can fill in while he is out. And speaking of Grafflin, there's also a resolution on tonight's agenda to make a permanent leadership change there and appoint Debbie Alsbach as principal at Grafflin and Ryan Spillane as assistant principal at Grafflin. They are both currently in these roles as interims, and as we have all witnessed, they really have turned out to be a dream team over at Grafflin, a team that we are excited to make. Yay! That is a team that we are very excited to make permanent, so that will be on tonight's agenda as well. But on behalf of the Board, I really wanted to extend a big thank you and congrats to the two of them. And the last thing that I want to mention before we move ahead tonight briefly, and I'm hoping for the last time in a while, is the electronic sign at Bell Middle School, which is now back up and running to post important school and community-related messages. We have previously discussed that the school district and the town were not on the same page with respect to the town's posting of personal messages on that sign. I am happy to report, however, that we reached a temporary agreement. The sign's back on, and this agreement allows for all community-related messaging to continue while we work towards entering a new agreement with the town for joint usage of the sign on our property. Our next meeting with the town is scheduled for February 2nd, and we look forward to continuing to work on a more permanent arrangement regarding the sign. So that is it for tonight. We have our Bell presentation. As I said, Jeff Curtis and also Jennifer King Thompson are here, and we're looking forward to that. So but for now, I'm going to turn it over to Christine for the superintendent's report.
Are you going to...
Oh, oh, wait. I have my resolution, which I don't normally have in the president's report, which I just said. Okay, so before I turn it over to Christine, we have item 1.1.1. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the revised 2022-2023 Board of Education meeting schedule. Can I have a motion to adopt that change in the schedule that I had just discussed?
I move.
Move. Can I have a second? Kaylee? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you so much, and now I will hand it over.
Great, so I'd like to invite up Mr. Curtis, who will introduce our Bell students and kick off our presentation this evening. So Mr. Curtis, please, come on up.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. We are excited, Bulldogs one and all, to be here tonight. I'd like to invite up Ms. King Thompson as well, our assistant principal. We're going to, we're going to take our slide presentation about three slides at a time, and we first want to express to the Board members and those of us who are here, parents and students, thank you, and teachers for coming tonight as we go through this process. We are always excited to showcase our students and our teachers and the great work that they are doing on a day-to-day basis, and I know you're excited because you're going to get to see some really outstanding presentations, work that's been done, work that's been updated since their original presentations in some cases. Our spaces are all set around the building, so without further ado, let's get started. And I have to go this way. Trying to move my slide ahead. There we go. So as you can see, the goal behind this is something that is common to the other middle school as well, right? Our idea of fostering student agency to empower our students in all that they do. And as we watched this happen at Bell, it was very exciting because these are things that was, were very evident as students first walked into the building to do these presentations and then walked out. So the idea again of student agency, the purpose of our student-led conferences is not just that student agency, but also to strengthen and encourage the student-parent-and-teacher partnership. And the last bullet here about fostering student reflection and growth, again, as I watched students and parents walk out of the building beaming with the pride of ownership and completion of a thing that I think is really a nice addition to our curriculum was really rewarding for a first-year principal. It was really, and I think you'll see it when it's your turn today as well. So that's a little bit about our purpose. The next part, this slide's got a little more meat to it, and it talks a little bit about the timeline as we got through this. You can see this is setting up students for success in their student-led conference. Early October, our grade-level leaders developed a plan of action for their teams and created some tools. Later that month, our students then hopped into developing understanding about what this is all about, what is a student-led conference. We had help with district administrators at that, and again, teachers and grade-level leaders. So students started working with their core teachers, and then in mid-October, they learned about SMART goals and also academic and executive goals, and used scaffolding to create their own. We had some exemplars and some samples that they were able to draw from as each student got to manipulate and make it their own. Again, something that you'll see today. By mid to late October, they were using a variety of resources to reflect on who they were as learners, and that's an important piece of this, to develop these goals and then an action plan. You can see it's very small right there, but that's somebody working on theirs. Again, later in mid-October, students creating slides so that they can effectively communicate their goals as their parents and teacher watch and listen, and the guiding process takes place before. And this is a student-led, right? It's right there in the title, student-led conferencing. And then finally, by late October, we started putting the finishing touches, and the student, students did some role-playing with this conference with their peers, and then it was go time, and we'll step up, and I'll hand the mic over to Ms. King Thompson.
So there was a clear structure for the conference. It starts with the teacher kind of telling the parents a little bit about what their child, what they know about them, how excited they've been to be working with them. Then the student shares an academic goal, followed by executive functioning, and the parents get to ask questions for how they can support and just understand it better when they're at home. And I'm going to walk you through a couple of slides from one of our sixth graders, Maya, because the audience isn't lucky enough to come and see this in action like the Board is, so everyone's going to get a little taste, an appetizer for the Board, a taste for the audience. So they have, you know, this first presentation slide with their name and their team. Then there's a little agenda about what the child will be speaking about. The fifth grade focused on one goal for one core class, but the sixth grade picked a goal for each of the core subjects, as well as both had executive, executive functioning goals.
Also, Maya did choose to place Bobby right on her first slide. We appreciate that. Go Bulldogs.
Here's an example of one of the core subject goals. You can see it shows a strength, a goal, and then some of the strategies that Maya will use to reach that goal. Another cool part of her presentation is she has some annotated work samples showing some of the things that she's done in social studies to kind of get a sense of where she's at and what, where her goals are coming from. And now, it's what the Board has been waiting for. You get to see these conferences in action. So I'm going to introduce the students that we have and assign them to their board member, and then we'll take a brief intermission while we show the board members what this looks like. So in Studio 2, I'm going to have Farouk, Mr. Straley, with Jane, Board Member Jane. Come on, Farouk.
Elbow, your follow.
Going to go right there.
Follow down?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And Farouk's grown up. I don't know. No, I think...
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
Come right up on the stage. It's great.
The whole group.
Stand right over here.
Okay. Then I have Maya with Ms. Adams will be with Board Member Warren. And Maya's grown up. I have Julia, Ms. Lazarson, and Julia's grown up. We'll be with Kelly. Kaylee, sorry. I have Abigail. Abigail's grown up. And myself will be with Board Member Ryan. And then Victoria with Ms. Kenna.
Do you want to read these people down?
Oh, very fun. We'll be with Board Member Grasso. Okay, we're going to take our brief intermission so that we can do these conferences.
Okay, so welcome back. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to take a pause. My, my heart almost exploded in there. That was just amazing. So I know, I know we had a chance to ask questions of our presenters, but I did want to take a moment to ask the Board if they had any specific questions that they'd like to ask our students, and then Mr. Curtis will emcee it for us, so go ahead, Jane.
I'm going to let everybody start. You can come back to me. I'll let Hillary start. You guys all did an amazing job. We each got paired up, so I don't know what everybody else did, so I'll hear maybe from some of the questions.
You know, thank you all for, for doing those with us, and I guess one question I have for sort of whoever wants to answer it is, how did it feel, you know, in, in elementary school when there were parent-teacher conferences? It was parent and teacher and no student. And how did it feel to have your parents in the room with your teachers sort of asking questions? And would it, I guess the, the second part of that question is, would it have felt okay if your parents had asked questions, like maybe if they had concerns or something? Would, would that have been something that would have been okay to ask, or would that have felt weird?
It wasn't bad. It was just, it was very suspenseful. I always wanted to know what would my teachers say about me if I was like a good, if I did a good job. So it wasn't, I liked it because I always felt like my teacher got to talk about me and that I know what I need to improve on, but I didn't really think of the idea of doing it by ourselves, and we have the freedom to pick what we think we should improve on.
Anyone else want to share? One more? Stephen?
I really liked this kind where we also got to share what we think our goals and strengths are, because I think it's good that we have, that like we have a say and that our parents also get to hear it, and it's coming from like two different people, and it's our like view too, so like we're included in like the conversation.
I also really liked this because I feel like when it was just the parent and the teacher, it was very blocked off from the students, like, like your, like, your parents might tell you if you did a good job or bad job or what, but you didn't really know everything going on and what you really needed to improve on. So like, I feel like this new type of presentation really gave you like time to look back and think about everything you really did need to improve on and what you think you can do to help improve on it, which is why I think it was really good.
I agree with, I agree with Abby. I was going to say that it shows like what you think you're struggling on and that if the teacher that, like, the subject that she teaches that, or he teaches that subject, it can, like, they can see what they, what you think, what you think you're struggling, struggling on and like help you work on that. And also like, it also like how, like, instead of like your parents and your teachers just having like a conversation themselves, you can also see like what your teacher like thinks, like how you're doing and like what you can work on yourself with the feedback.
I was going to already ask the same thing, so I probably skipped me. I think that was, those were great answers.
Fantastic.
What I was going to, what I was going to ask.
Okay.
Kaylee? I asked a lot of questions inside, but I can say, what is one major thing you felt, so it's kind of a two-part, you felt proud of during this whole process, and what is one thing you felt that was a little bit of a challenge for you during the process? So one thing that you're most proud of and one thing that you felt like was a challenge?
I think the most, the thing that I was most proud of was what I picked as a goal, and doing it again in January was really helpful because I get to see how much I improved and if I want to stick with my goal and finish it off, or if I want to start a new goal and make a change to what I've been doing. The most challenging part, I think, was actually picking a goal. Most of, all of our teachers gave us options to pick from, but just knowing like what you need to improve on, like picking by yourself was really different because it was always the teachers thought this, your parents thought that, and you always thought that's true because you trusted them. So the most challenging part was making up your own goal.
Thank you.
I think the best part for me was like, it was kind of being able to work on what I needed to focus on and being able to choose it myself instead of hearing it from someone else, because it boosts my energy instead of bringing it down and thinking what other people think I need to work on. Instead, I get to choose it, and I think the most challenging thing for me was like seeing if I actually followed that or like if I wasn't able to do it and like how much I need to like continue to work on that or like if I'm able to choose another goal.
Thank you. Warren?
I totally agree with Julia. I think that the best thing was being able to really think and reflect on yourself about what you really need to work on, because you still get input from other people on what they think you also are going to need to work on, but it's really helpful knowing as yourself that you, that really is what you definitely need to work on after reflecting.
Quick question. I know this is probably more than you've done in the past that you had to prepare this, but do you see this helping you and will you do this, continue doing this in the future? Like after you get out of middle school and go to high school?
I think that this is really good, and I think that I will keep doing it even if it doesn't go through and even if we don't do it in school. I notice it's actually is really helpful for me to focus on what I really need to work on and what, how I can be better as a learner. So I think that it's a really good thing that we've been doing this and that we're trying this out, and I definitely think that we should keep doing this.
I also agree. I think it's really good that we're practicing this, practicing this when we're younger, like creating our own goals and what we think we're also like good at and what, something that like we're good at, because even throughout high school, like when, when we're adults, you also need to set goals and you also need to think about what you need to improve on, and knowing that we had already done this before, it'll help us later on.
I agree that I might, I think I'd probably bring it on to the future, even if I was not like told to do it, because it really helped me focus on what I need to work on and the goals I need to set to make sure that I was able to have a good learning experience.
Well, I wish I had learned this when I was in sixth grade, so.
Well, first of all, I'm just, I'm just so impressed with all of you, just how, how well-spoken and articulate you are and how much you all seem to enjoy this, but you touched on something, and just to piggyback on what Warren says about doing this, like you're setting goals now, but this carries over past other things with, you know, in your school, whether it's an athletic goal or a personal goal or something you want to do at home. Have any of you done this, even if you haven't written it down? Have you mentally set goals for yourself in other ways as a result of having, doing this exercise with the conferences? Yes.
Kind of what you said about like athletic goals or personal goals, it's hard when you first do this because you always feel like, oh, I'm pushing myself too hard, I should take a break, I shouldn't be doing this, it might hurt me. But after a while, when you build up your stamina, it's a really helpful skill that you learn, and it's very, it's going to, it's a skill that not a lot of people learn, and it builds up over time. So by the time you get into high school or college, goal-setting will be like a normal thing for you.
Right. Well, it's excellent.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Does everyone want to share?
Yeah. Did you, I think you wanted to say something? No, you're, okay. All right. Go ahead.
Does anyone have any other questions? The last thing I want to say quickly is to acknowledge these five. I think one of the things that is most valuable is the presentation skills as well, and not only did they do this once to their parents and with their teachers, but they did it today and now are up on live streaming, and the presentations that they did just now in our breakout sessions were really, really well-received and really impressive, so just again, a quick acknowledgement.
Yeah, I'd also like to, this is our first time we've ever done this. We've never had...
It was great.
...parent-student-teacher conferences before in any grade level, so I want to thank our teachers and our parents and our students for making this happen, and our administrative team. No, it just, we kind of created something from scratch this year, and it's really exciting for us to be able to see the good work that was done collectively in our, in our middle school community to make this happen with our kids. I mean, tonight is just, it was just amazing. So thank you very much to the Bell staff for being here today and showcasing our students in this way and their families for allowing them to share with us what their goals are. And I also, I want to take a moment to acknowledge Seven Bridges because work happened across the town too, and I'm really excited to see this continue and grow as we make revisions based on what we learned this year. So thank you, Jeff and Jen, and thank you to our Bell students and all of our Bell families for coming this evening. Have a, have a great...
You all did, like, just incredible, incredible work. So impressive.
Now, because this was a total effort, we need our Bell students, our Bell teachers, our Bell parents, all on the stage for a big picture. Everyone who was involved tonight, we need you up here for the big photo.
Center stage. I just want to say, like, I think all of us up here, I'm not sure any of us could have done that as well when we were in fifth or sixth grade, and it's just a really marvel at their presence. They were incredible.
Yeah, I got to do it because my daughter is a sixth grader, and so as a parent, I got to see it live, not knowing what I was getting into, and it was a similar experience.
But this is, this is beyond academic, because this is a life skill.
It is a life skill. It's so critical. And their present, their ability to present is...
All right, everyone say Bobby on three, or cheese. Ready, David? All right. Thank you. Thank you all so much. All right, have a good evening.
And thank you again to our teachers for implementing this and helping the students. It was fantastic.
Thanks, Eva.
All right, David, can you pull up my superintendent's report, please? Thank you.
Wow, that was something. That was great.
Love that. Okay, so for our community update, let me just get, I don't know if the clicker's So we will begin the superintendent update by asking our new principal, Ms. Alsbach, if she would like to come up and make a few comments to the community as we move forward with her appointment later this evening. And as it's, as, as is tradition, when we have a huge leadership appointment in this district, we ask our candidates to share a few comments with the community and, and as, as we all look forward to welcoming Debbie to the helm permanently. So Debbie?
Thank you, Christine. It is such an honor for me to be appointed as the Grafflin School Principal. I look forward to continuing my work as the educational leader with students, staff, and parents in a school that I treasure. My 18-year tenure at Grafflin has taught me that the staff and its larger school community are dedicated and committed to its students and are always doing what is best for them. It is my promise as the Grafflin Principal, along with the teachers and staff, to continue to put its students first and work diligently to ensure that each child feels included, valued, and experiences success at Grafflin. And I think thank each and every one of you for your vote of confidence and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you so much, Debbie. We're so excited.
I would like to share that when I announced to Grafflin this recommendation of both Debbie and, and Ryan, there were wild cheers in the, in the, in the academic center of support for, for Debbie and Ryan's appointment, and I can't be more pleased to be able to present them to you this evening. I want to also acknowledge Ryan is here. And go ahead, Ryan. Make a few comments.
Tough act to follow, Mrs. Alsbach, as usual, but first, I just want to thank the district and the Board for your support. The district has supported me through the Future School Leaders Academy, and the lessons I've learned through there have put me in a great position to be successful, so I want to thank you first. Secondly, I want to thank Mrs. Alsbach because she has been a wonderful mentor for me these last few months, and I couldn't ask for a better partner to work with. And then it's an absolute honor to serve the community in this role. I want to continue my work partnering with the staff and parents to help make sure that our students are having a great experience while they're at Grafflin, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so our next slide deals with the calendar. So we, I want to thank our community for providing feedback, our students, staff, and our parents for sharing with us what's important for the us and for me to consider when presenting the final calendar to the community. At our last meeting, I talked about some areas that we were receiving feedback on, and we had a discussion here at the Board level, and I, I recrafted the calendar to address some of the concerns raised to us through our survey. And so the, the new calendar has shortened the two-week holiday break. I, I removed three days and I placed them in other spots in the calendar. I added Good Friday back to the calendar as we discussed. We looked, Lisa and I looked at the past 23 calendars, and Good Friday has always been off, so that was a recommendation from the Board. I added the Tuesday of Passover to the calendar to support travel. Out of the last 23 calendars, only two of them did not have Passover embedded in the spring break, so we made that adjustment. And then I added the Friday before Memorial Day to honor concerns expressed from our parents. Not that we had a two-week break at the holiday in December and January, because we've had that before, but the break was going, because of where Christmas fell, the break was pushing far into January, which has, which is, was an anomaly, so we did make those adjustments. So that, that is the calendar that I'm presenting to the Board tonight for adoption, and I think it takes into account the feedback that we've received.
Thank you. I think, you know, I had, I received a lot of feedback regarding the two-week holiday break, mostly in... break, mostly in favor of the two-week holiday break. But, and I think we can do that again. I think, like you said, when, when Christmas, New Year's falls on that Wednesday, it's sort of tough. Calls on a Monday, Friday, sort of flows into a calendar easier. The other thing I think you mentioned last, I guess last meeting was, um, rating day, which we don't have much of a control over. So, I know we had, we had, uh, people concerned about why we were ending school so late, but that's really not our doing. But thank you. I think the calendar looks great.
And, and for the, around the rating day's concern, it's normally our fourth and eighth grade parents who are afraid their kids are gonna miss moving up because of camp, but we've ended that late before and we've moved, moving up to the week before to accommodate, you know, our kids because it is their event. And I'm not gonna, um, place events in a calendar in a space where kids can't participate because of summer plans. So, we've, we've made adjustments in the past to support our families that need to be able to use that week for, um, to support some of the summer activities that their kids participate in. So, we did receive two submissions for before and after-school childcare in our district. So, Jamie and I are scheduling, Jamie Edelman and I will be interviewing potential candidates before we move forward with, uh, what we think makes sense in terms of a process, just to see the viability of the organizations that submitted interest to us. So, we plan on, on interviewing, um, the, the two different organizations the week of February 6th and I'll be back in touch with the Board of Education after those interviews are completed. So, as Jane had mentioned, Jeff needs to, uh, leave for six to eight weeks and, uh, we are lucky enough to have Carol be able to step into his role to support Grafflin. She knows many of the students and families that have attended, that are attending Bell because they, she was the principal for them at Grafflin. So, we think the transition will be smooth and I know Jeff will be back as soon as he is able to. So, that appointment's on the board agenda tonight. We had our CARES committee scheduled, uh, to discuss how to move forward with the DEI position, but our insight presenter, Kia, needed to reschedule it because she had an unavoidable issue, um, that she didn't anticipate. So, that new meeting is scheduled for next week. So, we'll have an update on our February 8th meeting agenda. So, this is, uh, we're at the end of quarter two, so I just wanted to share with you the number of incidents that we have had that were categorized as hate speech, bias, or discrimination. You'll see that we had an increase of incidents in the middle school and the high school respectively. Um, before holiday, before the February break, all of our students will be, um, experiencing a hate speech lesson as a result of the number of incidents that we've noted in quarter two. And our DE, our district equity team and our school-based equity teams have been working hard to, um, to, um, design those lessons for our students that are, um, appropriate based on age level. And we'll be doing some of that work to prepare our student, our teachers to be able to facilitate those lessons next Friday when we have our half-day within sight. And then just an update on some, uh, things that are happening within our school community. So, this Friday, the Board of Education has an executive session. We'll be looking at architects and construction managers, um, for our capital projects. We have, uh, World Read Aloud Day, February 1st. Um, next week, again, we have our early dismissal. We have Frozen that will take place next week. It's at, uh, Seven Bridges. We have Seven Bridges students acting in Frozen. Uh, we have Harlem Wizards on the 5th. We have our administrative retreat in our next Board of Education meeting on February 8th. And that is the end of the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you so much. I still can't get over those students from Bell. I'm like, really? That was just fantastic. Okay. We are now moving on to committee reports. Does anyone have anything to report from, uh, this past week or two?
Yes. Um, I missed the CSF meeting last night, couldn't make it. However, as Dr. Ackerman said, Harlem Wizards is gonna be here and they sold out. I think it's the first time they've ever sold out this quickly.
Like before, before the event because usually there's tickets on sale there.
And, uh, you know, I, someone told me it sold out faster than a Taylor Swift concert. So, that's, that just shows how much, how much the community really wants to, uh, support this and it's, it's a great thing. Maybe next year we'll think about the Garden or something like that.
Anything else? Anyone else? Any committee reports? Hillary, any meetings? I don't think we do.
Ryan, can you present, um, health and safety?
You want to go? We had, we had our health and safety committee meeting, um, when was it? Andrew, you want to take it? Tuesday last week?
I believe it was last Tuesday, yeah. Um, we did some, uh, follow-up kind of updates on some of the action plans that came out of the out there audit, some of the work that we're doing around our buildings. Just kind of furthering along those, um, those implementations of those recommendations and we shared that. That's the highlight, I think.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, yeah.
And then we had our strategic planning committee, uh, meeting today just to get organized for our full-day session on March 1st.
Okay.
So, we're on, on track to be able to present our new strategic plan to the community in, in June.
Right. And our CARES meeting was changed, so we'll have a report on that next time. Um, and, uh, I think that's it. I found, I think, okay. Uh, that moves us to the public comment period. Uh, as always, we welcome public comments. We ask that speakers limit their remarks to three minutes with, for, ugh, in respect for each other's time. Um, we also ask, um, that you, um, sorry, I've lost my place here. Oh, I just also want to say that board members, if you don't speak here, we can always be contacted by phone or via email. And after the public comment period, that the board may decide to have a discussion after the entire period is over amongst ourselves regarding any comments presented. So, uh, if anyone wishes to come up to the microphone, if anyone has a public comment. Anyone here tonight? Okay. Thank you. I think we're good. Then that moves us on to item three, approvals and ratifications. Item 3.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the January 11th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion for 3.1? Can I have a second? Ryan, seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Okay.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.1.
I will second 4.1. Any questions or comments? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.2.
Anyone second? Kaylee? Okay. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And that moves us to our consent agenda, which is unusually short tonight.
Yes. It's great.
Which is, it just is items 5.1 through 5.5. Um, we use our consent agenda to make more efficient use of our time by adopting in a single motion those relatively routine matters, um, which are, you know, any member of the board may pull something out to discuss separately and move away from the consent agenda. Um, and, uh, you know, can I ask right now, we get 5.1 through 5.5, does anyone want to move anything out of tonight's consent agenda? Okay. So, um, tonight's consent agenda is CSE summaries, tax tertiary, um, uh, something that, well, let me, let me ask for a motion for the consent agenda first off?
I move.
Can I have a second? Okay. Kaylee's second. And, um, questions or comments? I have one, just, I, I wanted to learn a little bit more about 5.2, which I know we do annually with the APPR, just because I, like, I, I wanted to maybe just get a quick explanation of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in New York State, the APPR law requires that independent evaluators evaluate teachers. Um, and what that would mean is we would take administrators from various buildings and move them throughout the district to evaluate teachers in other buildings. Um, the nice thing is that New York State gives us a hardship waiver opportunity that if that creates a hardship in that you would leave a building potentially unstaffed or understaffed, then you can apply for a-
In order to accomplish this, you mean?
Right. You can apply for a waiver. So, the idea is that, um, if you have administrators scheduled in places where they're not typically assigned, um, you could be left in a place where you have a building either too lightly staffed or, or not staffed administratively at all. So, by applying for this waiver, what it basically means is our building administrators can evaluate all of the teachers in the building. Um, and we use a process for our probationary teachers where they're all evaluated by district administrators anyway. So, so we don't feel that, that the upside would really, uh, like offset the potential consequence of moving our administrators throughout the district. So, um, this approval, we have to get sign-off and agreement from, um, the association president for the administrators, for the teachers, and for the superintendent and Board of Education. And that's what this allows us to do. Everybody else has signed off on it, so now we're asking the Board of Ed to sign off on it for us as well.
Well, this makes sense and I, I'm just curious and not that we would always know what's going on in other districts, but I would think a lot of other districts would do this because it does seem like a hardship that would leave their buildings unattended. So, maybe it doesn't seem like the best, best plan. Like, has, 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 has anyone thought of maybe altering that? You know, it's just like when I read that and I'm, I'm thinking maybe that doesn't quite make sense for evaluation purposes.
Yeah, it's, it's a fairly simple application process for the, the state. It's not extensive. You basically just have to write a, a short paragraph description as, as to why it is an undue burden. And what I write each year in summary is that it could potentially leave one of our, one of our buildings vulnerable in that they wouldn't have the administrative support that they would need in the event that they had some kind of emergency or crisis.
Plus, we're doing the work to evaluate everyone appropriately.
That's right.
It seems like within their own building.
That's right.
Okay. So, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Nope? Um, okay. So, uh, all in favor of items 5.1 through 5.5? Aye? Okay. Item number six, be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges the following contracts approved by the superintendent pursuant to Board Policy 6085, purchasing and bidding. Um, 6.1 is in agreement for the following instructors for the Chapqua Continuing Education Program. And, let's see, let me get my pages correct here because that does happen on occasion. And that's it? I think that's, we just have 6.1? Okay. So, can I have a motion for 6.1 acknowledgement of the, um, contracts approved by the superintendent for the, um, continuing at teachers? Move, move? Can I have a second, Ryan? All in favor?
I have, I just-
Good question. I'm sorry.
There are so many great classes here. I think I'm all.
I know, they are quite good.
It's really great stuff. I see, uh, that Mrs. Ward is coming back to teach yoga for us. She was a long-term time English teacher here.
That's great.
So, it's wonderful.
All right. So, um, thank you. So, all in favor? Did we say that?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, nothing on facilities or financials?
Facilities, we do.
Oh, you do have something you want to mention.
We're, we're meeting Friday, right? We have, we have this executive session Friday.
Okay.
Where we're gonna be discussing and interviewing architects and construction managers-
Yes.
-for the bond work that we, that we anticipate starting hopefully in the summer, so.
So, hopefully we'll be reporting back to the community after that.
Hopefully I can report in the next meeting how we, where we sit with the architect and construction manager.
Yep.
So, that's where we stand there.
Okay, great. But that brings us to nine notice of future meetings. Our next scheduled meeting, um, which we just mentioned before, is Friday, January 27th at 8:15 a.m. in the Education Center Boardroom. And then again, that's to go over our RFPs and proposals regarding moving forward with our bond projects. Our meeting after that, um, a regularly scheduled board meeting, which is Wednesday, February 8th, 7:30 p.m., which is here again in the Greeley Auditorium.